Do you know the words? Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order at the clock is wrong, it's 7:01. And if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you unaware, our fire exits are to my left, this door and the door that we all came into in the rear of the room with the exit sign next to it. I need a roll call, please.
Acting Chairman Sprata.
Present.
Member Menard.
Present.
Member Yarborough.
Present.
All right. Request the reading of the legal notice, please.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of DePue will hold a public hearing on May 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, DePue, New York, to consider the application of Christine Schuster for the property located at 360 Gould Ave., DePue, New York, 14043, of Chapter 260, Subset 260-28A2, requesting 45 feet of relief from 50 feet west side setback requirement, requesting 4.40 foot of relief from 10-foot rear north setback requirement, and requesting 17 feet of relief from 30 feet front setback requirement. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, DePue, New York. Any and all persons' interest in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, there's going to be a correction on this. They actually dropped it off, an amended set of plans, and they're asking for an extra six feet of relief, so it'll actually be 11 foot of relief from that 30-foot setback. Or, I'm sorry, 23 feet from the 30-foot setback.
Is that correct?
It is correct.
And then, just so the board is aware, a point of order, we are missing two board members tonight. Chairman Delaney, Acting Chairman Delaney is not here, so Paul Sprata, another board member, is going to be super acting chair tonight. And because there are only three members here on a five-member board, we require a unanimous vote, a supermajority, because a quorum needs to approve every project that comes through the zoning board. Short version is, everyone needs to vote yes. There's one no, the project won't pass.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I'd like to call the petitioner, Christine Schuster, or I guess it's Mr. Schuster, Tom, to the podium, and state your name, address, and why you are here.
Tom Schuster. My home address is 363 Aurora Street, and I'm here for 360 Gould, Aurora Street in Lancaster.
And I'm Tim Arlington. I'm with Apex Consulting, survey and engineering service, PC. I'm Tom's consulting engineer. My office address is at 102 East Avenue, Lockport, New York.
Okay, and who is going to state what you want to...
All right, I'll begin. Tom can certainly chime in. So, I have a drawing, I hope all of you have a copy of that. This is, yeah, excuse me, this is what's existing here right now. And one of the things that's happening is 358, which is here...
Excuse me, sir, I can't see anything. You're blocking the whole thing, so I don't know how else you could do it.
Just stand right there, I can see it from here. Just stand right beside and reach across, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so, this is the section of the property that we're talking about. One of the things we're doing that, of course, would be required for this project is to combine 358 with 360. So, in doing what Tom wants in this project, we would be removing an existing house that is only a couple feet off the west property line, only 10 feet off the front setback, and of course, there's another structure in the back that's also very close. We'd be taking those down. And what Tom wants is to put up a commercial building here, our setback would be seven feet from the right-of-way, five feet from the west line, and 5.6 feet from the rear line. Now, in doing this, so Tom's use, the proposed use of the building would be, the front section he would use for his own personal recreational vehicle, two other bays he would be using for his construction business. Tom and his son have been in business for many years as a general contractor, and at least two other bays would be leased out to small subcontractors. Tom has been in business for a long time, so I'm sure he has a lot of contacts, that small subcontractors, all they need is a garage, they don't need really an office or et cetera, they need a place to put their vehicle, materials, or supplies per se. So, what we would do is, this house, or this, excuse me, this building would be setback here, we would have pavement area here that would provide the circulation. Currently, there's an entrance coming in off of Gould. Right along here, currently, Tom parks all his commercial vehicles. That's one of the reasons why the orientation of the building is as it is. And of course, in reviewing a lot of the buildings in the neighborhood, and Tom actually has more specific information, but we know, and specifically, that most of the buildings along Gould, whether they be residential, commercial, are only, are between five and 15 feet off the right-of-way. So, we're, even though we're very close, we're very consistent with what's in the neighborhood, and that's obviously important for aesthetics reasons. It also enables him to have proper circulation to come into the building. Now, the other two setbacks, five feet on each side, they were established for fire code requirements. But again, if you were to look at a lot of the buildings along Gould, again, a lot of them are way back and are very close to the property line, because most of the lots along Gould are not consistent with the dimensions that are typically allowed in your ordinance. So, again, we're talking about a very small area, we're trying to put a building that's consistent with what he needs for his use, and also for what he's looking to lease for two other small tenants, other related businesses. You could argue that this is substantial, but in comparison to all the other buildings up and down Gould, it's actually very consistent with the neighborhood, and it's not really affecting the environment. Tom's benefit, of course, is it establishes two more bays for storage, gives him an opportunity for a little rental income, a space for his own personal RV vehicle, and, as opposed to, you know, not having that. And then, again, as I said, the orientation of this building, the critical is, if we orientate it differently, we would lose 10 parking spaces that he currently uses for his commercial vehicles for his...
The apartments.
How many?
The apartments, sir.
In the apartments that are there, that are all on there. So, we're not, so one of the questions that came up a couple weeks ago when we were at planning board is, is the orientation of the building. They asked us to look at this to ensure that this was the best option, and make sure that we did look at other options that maybe would have required less, a lesser variance. And doing so, we felt that this still would be the best, and really, the only way that Tom would be able to accomplish what he's proposing, and ensure that he still has parking for the apartment, and have access in and out of the building. And Tom has a drawing that's better than I have, the larger of what the building would look at. It's a wood-framed structure, steel siding, steel frame. Some people call it a pole barn, but it's basically a thing.
I narrowed, I narrowed the front view of the, from the street, and put stone on it to give you a more accent, versus what it looked like before was this, with just the door and a window. So, I tried to make it a little more architectural pleasing, I'm sure we'll have landscape there. Nobody's to be parking in front of it, it'll all be grass, it won't be paved. And then, the building also, it's a little elevated in the back for storage. I started off, this is...
Like on the web, Tom, you continue with anything else you want.
I've never done this before, but this is what I started off looking like. You know, it's kind of basic, more blah. And I think I, you know, after thinking of it, that's why we made changes, you know, in the end, because of the end view. I did take the time to look at some of the other properties on Gould, which you probably all know. The Pue Fire, right on the corner, is seven foot from the property line.
The front, yeah, the front right-of-way.
The front right-of-way.
Yeah, the front setback.
Yeah, you got Maze, it's like nine foot off the property line. This is down past John Klummer, he's nine foot off the property line at 442. And then, you get down to 440, which is only six inches off the property line.
Six inches.
Six inches setback, yeah.
And what number is that?
That's 440.
440?
And then... Then we go to Marwell's building, which is the old Dickersons. They're two and a half feet off the property line.
Again, these are front setbacks.
Front setbacks. And there's, their, their big building is 3.2 feet off the property line. I'm worried, but...
The point we're trying to show is that we, that what may seem to be...
My building is 12...
Significant, but it's actually very consistent with the neighborhood, and we're trying to aesthetically not only accomplish what Tom wants, but also keep in mind to be consistent with what the character and what the neighborhood has to offer. So, we really wouldn't have an adverse effect that was proposing.
And what number is that?
That's 4, 342. That's where the, is it Erie Street? There's a little side street that's there?
Yeah, that's the corner of Erie.
Yeah. And the buyer is six and a half feet off the property line, off the setback.
You have anything else down there?
Just one little thing.
Okay. Go ahead.
I want to thank the village for consideration, carefully and successfully allowing us to expand our business. I purchased 360 Gould in 2000, and it was an old rundown building, often it was a coal station, DePue Coal. I was looking for pictures of that, and I couldn't find them, because that would have been something to see. I expanded a pole barn for the business, about a couple years after that. We've been good neighbors, we've been here since 2000. When DePue, the food pantry was in the, on the corner here, we donated labor and material to move them over to next to the church, so we did work there, under the basement of the fire, for the fire department. Recently, we worked on the building here for Audrey, refiner floor, we saved her 15,000 to 20,000. I got suppliers, and to donate some material, we discounted our labor, we saved a lot of money. I think this building will be attractive, it will be, I wouldn't say the nicest-looking building on Gould, but it will be pretty close.
Pretty close, yeah.
I have one more thing to offer. Tom took the time to contact the neighbor next door, and she wrote a letter, basically, in support of the project that I'm offering, also for your record.
Yes, they do have that on their record, too.
Yeah.
That one that's in your eyes package.
Yeah, it's in there.
Has everyone seen the letter?
Yeah. You want to see it?
Yeah, I'd love to see the letter.
Okay.
With that, we'll address any questions that the board has.
I have one question. On the front of the building, you've got, where you added two windows and a door, and you said that's going to be a grassy area. Now, is there going to be a walkway to the parking area from the door?
Just from the door to the, to the front. So, the building's setback five feet, well, setback five feet here, but it protrudes out 10, so there'll be a sidewalk going just to the door. And then, I did another, since you asked. I just did a little drawing of what it could look like. It doesn't show the sidewalk, but there'd be a sidewalk coming through here.
You drew it yourself?
No, my sister might have.
I would just change the color of that front door.
Yeah, that's, if we're, if we're just, we can, we can just take our colors.
Very nice.
Yeah, the color, pink door is better, it's supposed to be a brown.
I don't know, I kind of like pink.
All right, any board members have any further questions?
I have one. The extra space that's, that you are either going to lease, you're leasing out to...
I don't have a credit yet.
Okay, is it going to be a nine-to-five business, or is it, it's Monday, or Monday through Friday, nine-to-five type of business with parking in the additional areas there?
Yeah, they'll mostly be inside. It goes, it's a 12-by-12 garage door, so it's big enough that they can pull trucks inside. As far as parking, I would assume that they'd just be there nine-to-five, I mean...
Okay. No, I, just, just asking about the parking in general. You have residents there, you have ongoing business?
Correct.
And...
Most of my construction is on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Is on the left-hand side of the building.
Okay.
Our trucks, that's where my main shop is, but now, we might give a truck in the bigger buildings to the back, but it would all be east side.
Okay. So, with, if there was overflow, that they would end up parking on the street?
Yeah, there's, there's still, there's still enough parking between the two buildings.
Okay, that's...
We can park here, so that's also one of the reasons for the orientation, to allow for the parking here, allow for circulation, but also, there's enough that there will go a few vehicles to car through in this area as well.
Okay.
You can get 10, 10 spots, it's over 100 feet.
Okay. I was just asking, just making sure.
Jan, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Ken, you're...
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll read the, read the... Oh, Legal, does Legal have any questions? I'm sorry. Any public comments or questions from the public? If there are none, we'll go on to the next, I'll read the criteria for the variance with the petitioner's answer.
What about code, comments from code?
Oh, comments from code, I'm sorry, didn't mean to ignore you.
No, that's okay, Paul, I get it.
Not on purpose.
No, no, we've had many conversations, we're good with everything they're proposing.
You're okay. All right, thank you.
Don't forget to read the slate, read all three, as you're going through. This is the one with the three requests, right?
Okay, yeah, there are three requests for variances.
Yeah, each one has to be read separately, correct?
We're gonna...
A separate motion for each one?
A separate motion.
Separate motion, but we can...
What we discussed is, if the board wants to approve it, they can, he's got to read through the criteria and make reference to each one, but they can move to approve the slate.
Ah, I got you, I got you.
Move us, move us along a little bit quicker, as long as the record's clear.
Understood.
Okay, if we're, we can go ahead with this. The criteria, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? Your answer was no, and I have to agree with that, after what I heard.
For all three requests?
For all three requests, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm green at this, too.
You're doing great, this has never come up before.
Okay, number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? And you answered no, and I would have to agree with that.
For all three?
For all three?
For all three.
Okay. And number three, is the requested area variance substantial? And you put no, I guess I would have to agree with that, looking at the surrounding neighborhood.
Do you agree with it for one of the requests?
For all three of the requests. Excuse me, again.
You're killing it. It's okay.
Number four, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? And you answered no, and I would have to agree with that, on all three variances?
Yes, break on Paul.
I'm catching on. Number five, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? And you, your answer was no, and I would have to agree with that on all three requests. And number six, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? And your answer was, is that a five-foot setback versus 50 feet relief of 45 feet? I have a letter stating, neighbor to the west has no objection to the new building which you submitted.
And this is the west side setback, five versus 50, relief of 45. You've got to flip to the next one.
Which...
And read number six, because it's going to be different.
Okay. Where's the next one here? This one? Okay, getting back to number six request here, is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate, five feet versus 10 feet relief of, you've got 4.4 feet. Is that to the west?
And that is...
That would be the rear.
That was the rear setback.
The rear setback.
Okay.
Okay, I would have to agree with that. Do I have to do a third one?
Yes.
Now, this one's going to change, this is going to be 23 feet, not 17.
Oh, okay, that should come from the applicant. Are you making an oral motion to amend the submission on this application? Is your request that it be a 23-foot setback with relief of 17 feet, rather than a 13-foot setback?
That is correct.
It's still relief of 17 feet?
No, it'd be 23 feet.
So, I'm sorry, how far is the setback?
The setback will be seven foot versus 30 feet, so the relief we're asking for is 23 feet.
23 feet. And then, the setback is now seven feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Rather than the 13 feet?
That's correct.
Got it, okay.
All right, your answer to the, the third one is a setback of seven feet, and the relief of 23 feet. And that's what you answered, and as we just discussed it, I have to agree with that. All right, as we have that, we... Can I ask a board member if they would like to make a motion to approve or deny the variance as submitted, or as amended, the last one being amended?
And that is for the slate of variance?
That's for the slate of all three variances.
I make a motion to approve the slate of variances as presented with the amendment.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and that's carried. And we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Yarborough?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Sprata?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, your consideration of this.
Sorry, that's three yes, zero no. Motion approved.
Motion is approved and granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your letter from your neighbor back? There you go.
It was in my file.
There you go. I think they have it.
We have it on our file.
I made sure I got it for you.
Yeah, I brought it, and just to show that.
All right, thanks, Mr. Arlington, have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next one, Tom.
No one else here has a triple variance, don't worry.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of DePue will hold a public hearing on May 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, DePue, New York, to consider the application of Joseph Montando for the property located at 125 Albert Street, DePue, New York, 14043, of Chapter 260, Subset 260-23A2, requesting 10 feet of relief from 25-foot front yard setback requirement. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, DePue, New York. Any and all persons' interest in such application will be heard at this time.
Can we have Mr. Montando to the podium, please? Give us your name, address, and why you are here.
Joseph Montando at 125 Albert Street, and I'm trying to build the stairs to my front addition. There you go.
Okay, are there any questions from the board members?
No.
Ken?
None for me, thank you.
Jan, no, I have none either. I was there to see the property myself.
Great.
Any questions from Code or Legal?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from Legal, nothing from Code. Okay. Any public comments or questions? None? Okay, I'll read the criteria for variance with the petitioner's answer. Okay. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties he created by granting the area variance? You put down no, and I would have to agree with that. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You, no and only front door access.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with that. Is the requested area variance substantial? And you put yes. Would you like to further explain that or not?
No, not really.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just going to get my stare done.
Will the proposed area variance, I have to agree with that with your answer, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental conditions in a neighborhood or district? And you put no, and I think I can agree with that. Number five, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? And you put no, and I would agree with that. And number six, what is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? You're requesting, your answer was, you're requesting a 10-foot of relief from a 25-foot setback requirement. And I would agree with you there. Are there any board members, anyone want to make a motion to either approve or deny?
I'll make the motion to approve the variance.
And I second the motion to approve the variance.
All right, Ken? At this time, we had a second, we need a roll call vote, please.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Yarborough?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Sprata?
Yes.
That's three, yes, zero, no. Variance approved.
Motion carried.
A motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it easy.
You are rolling. Think I'm skidding here. Think I'm skidding here. Next, uh, applicant, please.
Please take notice that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Dupuy will hold a public hearing on May twenty-third, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the municipal building, eighty-five Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider the application of Massumer Rahaman?
Yes.
For the property located at fifty-six Antonette Drive, Dupuy, New York, one-four-oh-four-three, of chapter two-sixty, subset two-sixty-dash-fourteen B-one-H, to be allowed to construct a concrete driveway to the property line, requesting relief of three-feet, three-foot requirement. A pre-board meeting will begin at six-thirty PM in the council, or the conference room of the municipal building, eighty-five Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
At this time, could I ask Mr. Rahman to step to the podium and explain, uh, and give us your name, address, and why you are here?
My name is Massumur Rahman, I live in fifty-six Antonette Drive, Dupuy. So, I need a driveway, it's a one-car driveway now, so we are family members four, so we need more car to put it in there. So, that's why I applied for, make it a driveway bigger.
Okay. Uh, that, that's your whole statement, okay? The question I had, and I talked to you about this, uh, the drainage of water off the roof, plus snow removal. Uh, you said snow removal, you could push it onto your front
Yeah.
on the other side, so you're not on your neighbor's property. And you said that you could put a drainage out to the street?
Backside, yeah.
That would be under the concrete?
Or backside.
Or the backside?
Yeah.
Okay.
Backside is better.
Backside would be better for you?
Yeah.
All right, as long as you have the slope, and you have the room back there? All right, are there any other questions from the board members, Jan or Ken?
No.
None for me.
Jan, no? Okay, are there any public comments or questions? There are none. I can read the criteria at this point. Okay, number one. Will an undesirable, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Legal or, uh...
You have anything?
Nothing from...
Nothing, we're good.
Okay, both of yous are good, all right, thank you, sorry to, didn't mean to ignore you. Uh, I'll read the, uh, criteria here. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting the area variance? You put no, and I think you explained to me everything, and I have to agree with your answer.
Thank you.
Can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved some other method other than the area variance? You said no, and I have to agree with you, it's, uh, you don't have a lot of space there in front of the house for four vehicles. Uh, number three, is the requested area variance substantial? Uh, you put no, other other neighbors have some, uh, have same, which I did notice that in your neighborhood, so I agree with your answer. Thank you. Number four, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or district? You put no, I agree with you there. Is the alleged difficulty self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You put no, and I agree with you there. What is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? Uh, you're asking, your answer was three feet of relief extending driveway. And you do have a narrow driveway, so I have to agree with you there. Would any, uh, board member like to make a, uh, motion to approve or deny the requested?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Jan?
And I make a second.
Ken, thank you. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Yarborough?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Spata?
Yes.
Three yes, zero no, variance approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, please take notice that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Dupuy will hold a public hearing on May twenty-third, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the municipal building, eighty-five Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider the application of Anthony Principato, for the property located at fifty-six Alice Drive West, Dupuy, New York, one-four-oh-four-three, of chapter two-sixty, subset two-sixty-dash-fourteen B-one-H, to be allowed to construct a concrete driveway to property line, requesting relief of three-foot requirement. A pre-board meeting will begin at six-thirty PM, in the conference room of the municipal building, eighty-five Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
And can I call Mr. Principato to the podium, please? State your, your name, address, and why you're here.
Anthony Principato, fifty-six Alice Drive West, and for a driveway extension. My house actually faces Carroll, if you're familiar with that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
All the houses that are on those side streets are actually addressed to the larger street, with me being a corner lot, I only have, like, half the amount of driveway than all the houses on the main road have, so my only option is to go wide. Um, my neighbor to, if you're staring at the house to the left, so the west side, right? Um, Jill, I forget, I believe you guys have that, because I had a copy, that she wrote, the variance agreement, that I'm allowed to go up to the property line, uh, which I believe is five and a foot, give or take, um, on, on that side, and then, as well as going to the right side of the driveway in front of my own home, um, taking a little bit of space there as well. I believe you guys have that stuff, because we went through it, Rebecca and I.
Yes, they got all that stuff, I actually notarized your neighbor's
Yes, yes.
letter, so...
Mr. Paul was there the other day, and saw me in my best form, I was not expecting him to knock on the door. Um, and we went over it, then. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's on there, I'm, I'm only granted five foot.
We did draw that on there.
The right, I would, and is there something that I have to, um, go through to, to gain more than that?
That's why you're here.
That's why you're, yeah, that's what you're...
Yeah, I'd like to gain nine feet in total, to get a car there.
Um, what he's talking about is going, uh, the five foot in front of the property, I think this is to the other side, to the property line.
My own property.
You know how he's allowed to do the five foot?
You're, you're allowed to put five foot in front of your principal structure?
He wants to go farther than that five foot.
He wants to go nine...
Oh, you, you'd have to file for another grant, you should have put that in with this.
Okay, well, that's gonna prolong a lot of things, isn't it?
Are we allowed to amend that here?
Can he amend that?
It's up to the board, I mean, technically, it's a dangerous precedent to let, um, applicants orally amend, but we did do something similar with Schuster earlier tonight, however, that seems like it was an error we were very aware of.
So, no, Schuster had came in and changed things after planning, because he submitted everything together.
Okay.
Um, and then changed everything when zoning was already, um, put forth, so he changed everything when he already submitted it to the B and all that stuff.
So, this application is for the side lot, to go to the property line, and now we're talking about a separate variance to go beyond the five feet in front of...
He's asking for an additional four-point-five feet, is that what you're saying, you want nine-and-a-half feet?
To, for a car, yeah, an act, you know, I just told, nine feet is, is...
Is average, yeah.
Average car space.
I just, I hate to stand in the way of progress and streamlining your project, it's just, from our perspective, a completely separate variance on the other side of the lot, it's more complicated than just an amendment, it's a new request, essentially.
So, let's rewind a few minutes and forget I said that, I guess, I mean, uh...
They're, they're still gonna go forward with what you submitted, and, uh...
Yeah.
From where I'm sitting, it seems to be going well, it's just, uh, you'd have to get another variance to increase that.
Yeah, so I can take up my five foot now, and, and then, at a later date, add...
Additional, you can come back and ask for it.
Yeah, you just have to come back.
Yeah, make another application, and it'll slow down the process a little bit, but if approved...
It's, it's fine, I, the, the, the main, the main thing is, is the, the other side is, is more important anyways, the other side was, is kinda just, you know, the cherry, so...
You didn't know that until I told you about it, remember? Yeah.
I was unaware that I had to get a variance for my own property. And I didn't know that until the time of when we submitted everything, so I, there we are.
And there's only two houses on your side of the street?
Correct.
So, and that makes you a corner house.
Correct.
And your next-door neighbor being a corner house on the next street over.
Correct.
So, yeah, you'll have to make another application for a variance, to go in front of your house, going that way for the driveway. Okay? All right. All right. Uh, are there any, uh, other further questions from the audience? I see no one here is in the audience. Public comment or questions are none? I'll read the, uh, criteria here. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting the area variance? You put no, I agree with that. Can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You put no, I agree. Is the requested area variance substantial? You put no, I guess I would agree with that. Will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You put no, I would agree with you there. Is the alleged, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which consideration shall be relevant in the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You put no, I would agree with you. What is the minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? You put, uh, three feet of relief from property line requirement, which is correct. All right. Uh, can I have a board member make a motion to either deny or accept his application?
I make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Approve, the word I was looking for.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Jan. Uh, second, uh, need a roll call vote, please.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Member Yarborough?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Spata?
Yes.
Three yes, zero no, variance approved.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Somebody would notify us where we're meeting, what time, and all that stuff?
We'll do that after.
I'm sorry.
Gotta close it out.
Yeah, I've gotta close the meeting. If there's a second agenda, I repeat, separate motion, close the meeting, actually, second. Meeting is, I, there's no other, uh, business items. I would, uh, like to, uh, adjourn the meeting at...
Make a motion?
Uh, make a motion to, uh, uh, agend, to... I need an, an...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
A second to motion.
Mo, uh, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.